We'll open the meeting at nine eleven AM and thank you for your attendance. Do we have any apologies or leaves of absence?
I'll move an apology, uh, and leave of absence for councillor Taylor. And I assume.
Yeah, can't, yeah, well, we can do it separately. We're doing together councillor Edwards will make one.
And councillor Edwards.
Okay, do we have a second now? McMullin, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. Okay. Uh, we were looking at moving some of the conflicts with councillor Ladbrook to when you've got to be away, but we might get through the agenda anyway.
Yeah.
If there's no late except for that one item.
There's six of mine.
You've got six, have you? You've got six, have you? Conflict on six. Yeah. So, but if, yeah, I'm not sure what that other item is, but um, yeah, if it's not a long one, I think we should be able to get through. Okay, item five point one, community drought support. We've got no minutes that we had to do.
No.
Item five point one, community drought support reallocation of funds. Do we have a? Oh, please go ahead. It's councillor Ladbrook.
Um, conflict with item um, five point one, um, description, community drought support, reallocation of funds, declaring councillor as myself. Um, the person of interest is my wife Alana Ladbrook and myself. And the particulars, um, my wife Alana is president of the Roma Show Society and myself a committee member of the Roma Turf Club. The type of conflicts is a declarable conflict of interest and the action I'll take, I'll leave the room, um, while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
I wonder whether you could do that on different items if they were all the same, like five point.
Nearly all the same.
Six point.
But they're for different, they're different item numbers.
Yeah, no, but if you quoted the different item numbers, five point one, six point two, like example, it's exactly the same conflict, is it?
Yes.
But we do each conflict now before the item, so it's recorded.
Yeah, but maybe something we could look at next year, might streamline it.
Okay.
Um, okay, thank you. Any other conflicts? Um, okay, do we have any questions? Do we have a mover? Councillor O'Neill.
Uh, I'll move that council. This isn't a. I'll put the council repeal resolution number OM slash one one dot two zero two one slash sixty. A replace with that council one authorized the chief executive officer or delegate, signed funding agreements as required to offer the following community group events, a share from successful funding to the amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars each. The Roma Show, Christmas in the Park Mitchell, Injun Races, Serat Christmas Carnival. To offer the following community group events, a share from the successful funding to the amount of six hundred and ninety dollars each. The Nungu Community Association Incorporated and the Jackson QCWA.
Um, do we have a second now? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Six zero. We can get George back. Paul, can you come back, George? Item six point one, sale of vacant land located at Mitchell Queensland four four six five councillor McMullin.
Mister Mayor, I'll move that council accepts the advice provided by BR and VE Jones that they do not want to proceed with a contract for commercial land and buildings under this name to resolve to apply the except, exception available pursuant to section two, three, six, one A of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve Queensland to sell the vacant land to Artesian Poly Products Betrite Limited as trustee for the Bruce Jones Family Trust on the basis that the, a sale price and all other terms and conditions will be no less favourable to council than the terms previously offered to or by BR and VE Jones. B, vacant land has previously been offered for sale by tender and was not sold. And C, sale price paid for the vacant land will not, not be less than the market valuation. Three, delegate the authority to the chief executive officer or delegate to finalize and execute a sale of the vacant land to Artesian Poly Products Betrite Limited as trustee for the Bruce Jones Family Trust for a sale price not less than the market valuation and B, on acceptable terms and conditions provided always, provided always that those terms and conditions must be no less favourable to council as the terms previously offered to the previous proposed by BE and VE Jones.
Do we have a second now? Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. Item six point two, maintenance Manandangji Parklands. I'd like to move that council provide a monthly service to the Manandangji Cultural Heritage Services of vegetation management of the Manandangji Parklands, excluding watering. Uh, and that these costs be funded from the in-kind assistance twenty twenty one, twenty two GL zero two nine four seven dot two zero zero two dot two zero zero one. And the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty slash twenty three budget for a period of no more than twelve months to ensure each monthly delivery includes mowing, brush cutting, spraying and sundries. And three, note that all communications for the delivery is through council's coordinator, parks and open spaces, Roma and surrounds and the project manager of Manandangji Cultural Heritage Services. Do we have a second now? Councillor O'Neill, any opposition? Does?
Just ask a question.
Please go ahead.
Just through you, may I? Just thinking about this particular, um, you know, area. Um, and a recent CR that I've put in on behalf of, um, Roma Echidnas who are asking for fairly similar support, particularly in the lead up to their event. Is it, is it, there's no report for it today. Is it something we could, uh, address as part of this, you know, uh, or is it another thing that I could, we, we could talk about today? I'm just, just thinking if this is the last council meeting before, um, you know, we'll have one in the end of January, of course, but that's very close to the actual event. I, um, and I'm only thinking about it because of the, the particularly part two, which includes the mowing, brush cutting, spraying and sunroof.
Councillor McMullin.
Mister Mayor, can I just ask a question? I might be wrong, but I think council already do the echidna's land. Mowing and slashing and that.
Yeah, it's a bit more than needs to be done, I think.
Okay, no, it's fine, I'll be.
So, so just on the, the echidna's one there too, like obviously the guys will go and leave next week. Anyway, so we're not going to have anyone for the next probably two, two or three weeks anyway. So the period they're asking for is only going to be probably a matter of four weeks or five weeks anywhere. Well, this is six to twelve months, so, um, you know, that one we could, the request has come through as a CR. We'll have, we can look at that one. It's probably our operation.
Through the mayor, we, we have started to look at the echidna's one. Uh, there's some additional requests in that one, I understand, around some, uh, set, setting up of gravel and things like that at the entrance of that. Uh, manager of operations has got that, is starting to look at that one, but that wasn't complete for today. We were expecting to bring that along to January. The amount of work that would be needed out there could still have been done in time for the event. Uh, so yeah, probably be guided, you know, we haven't got all the information ready for you today. So yeah, whether you want to wait, wait, carry that one over until the January meeting would probably be the big one. And I can, in the meantime, I'll be talking to the manager of operations to make sure that that's, that's all getting tight.
Mister Mayor, through to, to go back and have a look at the resolution, we council did have a in-kind commitment to that project.
Yes.
So I think we just do it as part of the in-kind anyway. So you've already resolved to actually do an in-kind up to a certain value.
So it won't actually have to come through a council.
That was what my, what I was hoping to do. Darren wasn't here at the time, obviously, when that
Yeah.
had those discussions there, but I can have a look at that during the break, Mister Mayor. Um, you know, I, I do recall we did have an amount in mind when we spoke to, um, the organizers of the event. Uh, the council contributed up in kind and that's what I certainly booked the, um, irrigation to. Um, so let me just check that over the break there because if we've got an amount there as in kind, it's just going to be far simpler to say, look, we've already given a commitment in kind. Um, they're still doing their own able. It's only the, the, the areas in behind the engulfed areas. It's, it's not a significant area.
So Mayor, sorry for over complicating this. I just thought, because we were talking about the, you know, cutting grass and whatever in that, that area. So maybe, um, uh, if you're going to pull that resolution from, uh, earlier in the year, if we need to address something today, we, we could then, so, um, I'll park where this is and, and I'm happy to still second the motion as soon.
Righto. So I think we need to find out and then we might have to just run another special meeting after because we can't bring any other new points up in a special meeting apparently. So, um, but we could do one straight after.
So Mister Mayor, I just have a question for.
Yeah.
Deputy.
I've told it.
Um, you know, for the next few weeks, do we have anyone that, that still does the slashing and all that for those two or three weeks? Or they all go?
Um, yeah, it's, Ken's not here at the moment, um, councillors, but it's generally any of them, a small crew on.
Yeah, just, we still have a crew.
Most of our slashing on our council roads, we actually use contractors anyway. So, so the contractors, you'll still see.
We have someone still doing the foot baths and all that, or that Tommy?
For, for the period of the, of the closed down, that I would say no.
It's skeleton crew.
There'll only be skeleton crews around from there.
It just makes it hard. I notice in other, like Colombo and all that, you know, they, they mustn't either. I just noticed last year, you know, like the grass is three or four foot high because there's no one.
We, we have a skeleton crew councillors there for that two week period. Um, the slashing though, like the council roads, we use contractors there. So that's why you see the slasher going on the side of the sun.
I just thought around town, it's probably the biggest, you know, growing period of the year. And I know the schools go through the same problem. They got, come back to school and they just ruin the lawns because, you know, they're two foot high.
Well, it might be something we can look at a different time, uh, next year, but it's not really part of this one. Okay, so we have a mover and a second now. Is there any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? I'll, I'll just say that, uh, Manandangji Parklands have a long-term effort uh, by Ron Mans and, um, the volunteers down there. And, um, I believe anything we can do to keep it going, um, will be great. And I believe the Maranoa community would like to see us do that. Does anyone else wish to speak, uh, for or against? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. Uh, item, uh, six point three, emergency air conditioner replacement in June visitor information centre. Councillor Guthrie.
I'd like to move that council one engage a suitably qualified contractor to supply and install a replacement air conditioner at the Injun Visitor Information Centre. And two, transfer budget allocation for the associated costs from GL zero two two three two dot two zero twelve. Parks and streetscapes, parks maintenance, engine operations and maintenance to GL zero two four nine six dot two zero one twelve. Uh, engine administration centre, engine operations and maintenance.
Okay, we have a second now. Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. Item zero, Roma Sale Yards interpretive centre, new COVID nineteen public health and social measures from seventeenth of December twenty twenty one. Councillor Hancock.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to move to lay this on the table so that I can, and other councillors, I'm assuming haven't had a chance to read the link. Um, that was given to us just before the meeting started regarding the, um, public health and the direction. I haven't had a chance to read that for myself.
Right, well, I've just got one question while the office is here, if you don't mind. Have we had any, have we asked, I couldn't see in there, but have we asked the volunteers out there about it? Got their views on what we're planning to do?
Um, no, not really, Mister Mayor. We sort of talked to Justine and Leanne Crawford at the tourism because they deal with them mostly. Um, tours stopped now anyway. So it was, the recommendation was just based on the hours that my staff are on site so that somebody's available to check these vaccinations before entering.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I just add to that if I could? So as a part of the greater, uh, COVID directives, I've actually been in, in touch with Justine, uh, Miller, uh, coordinator at the Big Rig around this particular issue and of course everything that's going to affect the Tourism Information Centre.
Mister Mayor, could I just ask now, I'm a bit hard, it can.
Sure, speak up a bit louder. No, you'll find, sorry about that. Yeah, I am soft spoken.
Yeah, yeah.
So yes, the, what we have done is we have actually been in touch with all of the volunteers now for the visitor information centre and my understanding to the sale yard, uh, for about what this is going to mean. So particularly that our staff and visitors where there are uh, what's going to be a requirement for all people to show their vaccination status, uh, in place. That those people are aware of that as well, that it will also be an obligation on staff and our volunteers. So we, we've captured that now.
Okay, so we've got, we've got a, um, a motion to lay it on the table. We'll go to the vote on that. All those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Mister Mayor, I'll take it that's to, to, later in the meeting.
Oh, later in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I do apologize. I know your time is really important, but I just would like to read that for myself, if that's okay.
Item six point five, Roma Sale Yards Prime Sales twenty twenty two. Do we have a mover? Councillor O'Neill.
I've got, I've got, I've got a declaration unless.
Please go ahead.
Um, item number six point five, description Roma Sale Yards Prime Sales two thousand and twenty two. Declaring councillor as my John Burkett, uh, person of interest, my parents, Gary and Julie Burkett. Particulars of interest, Gary and Julie Burkett buy and sell cattle at the Roma Sale Yards. Type of conflict is a declarable conflict of interest and the action I will leave the meeting while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any other conflicts? Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I will thank him for that.
Please go ahead.
But I apologize. Oh, cows, thank you. Uh, I'd like to declare a conflict on item six point five, descriptions Roma Sale Yards Prime Sales twenty twenty two. Declaring councillor as councillor Joanne Hancock, person with interest, related party, close associates or other relationship is GL and JM Hancock, is my husband and myself. Hancock Pastoral Company, my brother-in-law and sister-in-law and my husband and myself. Particulars of interest, our entities buy and sell cattle at the Roma Sale Yards. Type of conflict is declarable conflict of interest and the action will be to leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, any other conflicts? Do we have a mover? Councillor O'Neill.
What is John, the councillor Burkett's dropped off, is he?
Uh, councillor Burkett, do you, uh, have left or are leaving? Doesn't sound like he's there. Okay. Councillor O'Neill.
I'll move that, um, I'm just, I'll change this. Um, I'll move that in light of the recommendation from the Roma Livestock Agents Association, uh, council one nominate Tuesday as a regular sale day for prime cattle until the end of December twenty twenty two. This will give certainty to producers the prime sale cattle, uh, option weekly Roman. And to undertake a review in November twenty twenty two in consultation with the RLAA, uh, bringing a report back to council.
Okay, do we have a second now? Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Five zero. Anybody got the number? Did we ring him or did he?
He's good. I just text him. He's got the thumbs up, but he knows, he's back on.
He's back on, is he? Righto. Item six point six, Wallumbella Swimming Pool Management Agreement, option to renew. Uh, councillor McMullin.
Mister Mayor, I'll move that council approve the extension of the Wallumbella Pool Management Agreement for a further three-year period until fir, one November, one October, sorry, twenty twenty four on the condition that A, the Wallumbella Swimming Pool will be free general entry from seventeenth of December twenty twenty one. The ma, B, the management fee payable to Melissa's fam, Melissa Sutton Family Trust trading as Outback Swim School under the pool management agreement be increased by two thousand five hundred per annum effective from seventeenth of December twenty twenty one to compensate the pool manager in, in full and final satisfaction for loss of pool entry fees as a result of council decision to make the pool entry free. Two, authorize the chief executive officer or delegate to execute any associated documentation. Thanks, Joe.
Do we have a second now? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does the mover wish to speak to the motion?
No, Mister Mayor, thanks.
Uh, does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Hancock.
Uh, thanks, Mister Mayor. Um, while I will congratulate, um, the operator, um, if this motion goes through on a, you know, a contract. Um, she's done a wonderful job with the Wallumbella Pool Management. Um, I just simply can't, uh, get free entry into the pools. I think that for the small amount of money that, um, we do take as entrance into the pool, um, it is, it is, the community gets what they put into something. And so I just, I just cannot agree with free entry into the pool. I think the cost to the ratepayers, um, who may or may not use a pool will just, um, increase and continue to increase. And so on that basis, I can't support this motion.
Um, does anyone wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Guthrie.
I made the comment last week when we were discussing this, the actual Wallumbella Pool was built through community funding. There was a widespread undertaken by the Wallumbella, um, community to actually build the pool, which they did. And then they made a, they basically gave it to Education Queensland on condition that it was available to the community. So to me, we're talking small amounts of money. To me, I voted for this to go ahead. Um, because I do believe it is a community-based pool. It should continue to be accessed by the community. And I think we're talking a dollar per entry. I think we're talking very little money. To me, it's about equity and fairness across the whole of the region.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Councillor O'Neill.
Um, I, I obviously support, um, Mel Sutton. Um, I think the work that she's done at the Wallumbella Pool and equally at the Serat Pool is commendable. Um, I've had the opportunity to, to visit the pools and, and, um, uh, you can just see the professionalism that she brings to a, a, you know, a role uh, that she's been doing for some, for some twenty years. And so, uh, I whole hardly support extending, uh, the, uh, contract, uh, to keep Mel on, on board. Uh, as was noted only a week ago, we struggled, uh, to find a, uh, operator for the Wallumbella Pool. And, and Mel took it on and added to, to, um, you know, her, the complexities of her business, um, by, um, uh, you know, the addition of the Wallumbella Pool. So I don't want, for one moment, um, my, um, speaking against this and ultimately voting against it is a reflection on, on Mel Sutton. It's not. Um, uh, and I, I look forward to her continuing to deliver, uh, what she does in, in, uh, in this case of Wallumbella Pool. Uh, my objection, um, uh, which is all known to people in this room, is, is a principled one that I don't believe, uh, that, uh, we should be providing free entry to pools. Uh, I have a, a, you know, fundament, fundamental view that, um, a user pay. Uh, and whilst we are talking, um, a small amount of money and you can use that argument whether you're for it or you're against it, it comes down to the principle of whether you support a, a group of, um, ratepayers subsidizing the use of the pools. Uh, and I just simply don't. Uh, and so on that basis, I, I can't support the resolution, uh, as it stands because of that element of the resolution. But as I say, uh, I am, uh, if this is supported today, which I suspect it is because of the free entry to the pool, um, uh, Mel Sutton continuing to deliver, uh, with the, you know, the, the role of, of managing the pool will be a welcome one by the community.
Uh, does anyone else wish to speak for the motion?
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor. I, I'm still a bit baffled while we keep continually talking about the free entry. I thought that, like I said last week, that point's mute. We've, we've voted on that and moved forward. And I also said last week that years ago, we had a lot more, uh, things to do in a pool. We had a lot deeper pools. We had diving boards. And we paid a lot less money. Now we've, all we can do is lap swim or sit in it. Uh, and we're paying a lot more. So I think if it's free entry, uh, like Injun has been for a long time and like we have passed in the resolution last year, I think we'll get a lot more users use the pool. A lot more kids will learn to swim. A lot more kids will be, uh, will be more safe in pools or wherever they're going to swim in future. So I think, and I do agree with everyone else. Melissa Sutton's done a great job and moving forward, I think she'll be, she'll continue to do that great job. So I'll be voting for.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak against or for? I'll speak, uh, for the motion. I'm certainly not a councillor that believes in that ratepayers always have to pay. I don't agree with that. I don't agree with user pays when the user will never pay the massive cost. And I think it's sad that we don't look at the total cost of what pools are costing. Pools, uh, if the residents knew what pools were costing, uh, the entry fee is a minor component. And if you put your business hat on, you would say you would want, because there is such a huge subsidization of pools, you would want no barriers for more residents to come and use the pool. And this is about equity. This is also about something that's been brought up to me by parents in the region that say it's very expensive to go to the pool on a daily basis. And there is no such thing as user pay. That is absolute rubbish that there is user pay in our pools. Because if there was user pay in our pools, the fee would be incredible to use our pools. And there is no fee like that. So we do not have user pay. And I do not believe that we need any barrier for residents to come and use the pool. Um, and also another misnomer is that free entry means poor behaviour. That is something that council needs to deal with in different ways if, um, poor behaviour comes from free entry of pools. Another misnomer is that if you have free entry, people can just stroll through a pool and get in it. There has been no changes to how people enter a pool. And that is just a misnomer driven by people that are not interested in free entry. So this, if this is supported, this is a wonderful thing for the people of the Maranoa that we have a council that doesn't always want you to pay more, that doesn't want user pay. We want user use of the facility that all the ratepayers pay for anyway. And unfortunately, it is, um, not a business way of looking at it when you don't look at the real, uh, cost behind running a pool. And if we can double the amount of people using our pools in a year, in a year or in five years, that will be a wonderful thing to re, reduce the subsidization per ratepayer. And I also believe that the people that want to have the fee in may be looking at that situation that, uh, that will exclude other members of the community that cannot afford to pay. And I don't believe that's fair. So I believe good behaviour in our pools, free entry of our pools is where we need to go in the future. And I've already had people speaking to me that the Maranoa is leading the way in doing this. So I will be supporting this motion. Uh, does anyone else wish to speak? Or does the mover wish to say?
Thanks, Mister Mayor.
Sorry, sorry, councillor. Sorry, sorry, councillor McMullin, I, I, I just have to raise a, a point of concern, Mayor. Uh, at the Surat meeting, I used, uh, a, a turn of phrase, uh, which you called me out on. You have just, uh, suggested that the contribution that either councillor Hancock or I have, uh, made was rubbish. Uh, is that the standard in which you now, uh, set in, in terms of the debate in this chamber?
Councillor O'Neill, I never ever mentioned, uh, councillor O'Neill or Hancock in.
And nor did I in, in Surat. Um, but, um, you just, uh, verbatimed, um, a, a comment made by one of us uh, in relation to user pays and you said that was rubbish. Is that the standard now? I, I just want to know where we sit.
Uh, well, I'll, I'll correct you, councillor O'Neill. I was not talking about any particular councillor. Uh, user pay has come up in many situations as far as talking about this issue. So, um,
But that's the standard of the language in, in the chamber now, is, is to use, uh, comments like that. I, I just want to know where we sit.
I, I do not believe, I think that, uh, what I said was that it is rubbish that we have user pay, uh, in our pools, because we do not have it in any way, in any time. And if it was directed at you, I would be saying something, councillor O'Neill. Uh, councillor McMullin?
Hey, Mr Mayor, I'd just like to.
Sorry, I just said, well, that, I, I now understand it.
I'd just like to, um, sum up. I'm not really familiar with Wallumbella Pool as yet, but obviously there's a certain amount of people with children use the pool. But after the Roma, um, since we've introduced it in Roma, it's been a success, I believe, uh, from what I'm hearing, contrary to what the media, comments in the, in the local media and that. Um, we all talk about the ratepayer paying for it and ratepayers have been paying for pools, libraries and everything for a long, long time. But what I'm finding, I'm hearing, I should say, there are people who are paying rates in this town and on lower incomes and they couldn't afford to send a child to the pool every day for, excuse me, four dollars, I think it was four dollars entry, I stand corrected, you know, four dollars. So that's twenty bucks a week if they want to go every day. They're already paying for it in their rates. So I believe free entry is the way to go.
Okay, uh, if no one else is wishing to speak, we're going to go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
All those against? Five-two, if I can call for a division. Item six point seven, uh, letter of request for Roma Bush Gardens Associations Incorporated. Councillor McMullin?
Yes, Mayor, I'll move it. Council one, endorse the proposal of Roma Bush Gardens Association Incorporated to further develop the Roma Bush Gardens, including the construction of the amphitheatre. Two, provide a letter of support to Roma Bush Gardens Association Incorporated to strengthen grant applications to fund the development of the Roma Bush Gardens. Um, can I just change, uh, um, council provide a letter of support to Roma Bush Gardens Association Incorporated prior to the end of, br- end of, how do I word that? Pro- pro- prior to the, prior to the end of Christmas, um, before the Christmas holidays, that makes sense? We, um, needed sort of, I don't know how to word.
Christmas holiday, depends on Christmas holidays.
Well, yeah.
Provide a letter of support by close of business.
Closure, to stretch, yeah, by cl- closure on Thursday. Close of business Thursday, is it?
Uh, I'll find your date.
Yeah, council finishes.
Twenty, twenty-third Thursday.
Twenty-third, yeah.
Christmas closure, twenty-third of the twelfth?
That just emphasizes the point, councillors, that's fine, that emphasizes the point. I mean, we had in there to coincide with the grant application and then.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But that just makes it a bit clearer.
To strengthen grant application. Provide a letter of support to Roma Bush Gardens Association Incorporated prior to Christmas closure on the twenty-third of December twenty twenty-one. To strengthen grant applications to fund the development of the Roma Bush Gardens. Three, supply the Roma Bush Gardens Association Incorporated a copy of the certificate of currency for council's current public liability, products liability and professional indemnity, indemnity policy and an overview of policy's coverage. And four, consider the additional requests at a future meeting.
We have a second. Councillor O'Neill, any opposition?
I've got a question.
Councillor Hancock first and then O'Neill.
Um, I have no problems with this. I'm just wondering, the, the construction of the amph- amphithe- amphitheatre, do we have a cost to? Um, and what, if, if this resolution goes through as it is said here, as recommended, what is that, what is that cost to council?
Um, through, through you, Mr Mayor. Um, it, it, we received on, uh, the tenth of December, someone, this report was written, just a, a, and, and meeting minutes. I know in the past, there was a little bit of work already done there when they done the dam upgrades, I believe.
Start, council already start.
Um, from, from the letter, there was no request for any financial assistance. Or from the information I have, there's no request for any financial assistance. I'd imagine that if they have grants and they need some funding, they may come back to council and ask for financial assistance. But this is more just consent that, that we're, we're supportive of, of, of this project.
So this reads that we're endorsing proposal, um, to further develop, including the construction of an amphitheatre. So I just wonder whether we just need to be, I, I, I support it. I just need to, I just would like to know the.
But it's not saying we're funding it because like the construction could be for the grant that they're going for. Councillor O'Neill?
The two things, um, um, in light of what councillor Hancock's raised, maybe instead of endorse, the council support the proposal, because I, I, um, I, I know, uh, councillor McMullin met with, um, Jock Douglas and I did as well. Um, and they simply need council's support to put, to put to the funding bodies that we are happy with what they want to do with the, at the bush gardens. That's, they're not asking for money. They might in the future, but they're currently not. But I just wonder, instead of endorse, to support the proposal.
So is the mover happy with that?
I suppose, yeah, that'd mean this. As, as councillor O'Neill said, they just need council's permission to go ahead if the project go, to go for the funding, just to, they can't do anything without the funding and they've got to have permission from us to be able to build it on if they get the funding. And as Gav's, manager Gav said before, um, council have start, when they built the ru- did the dam, they built all the earthworks for, you know, the.
Sometimes it, but even the word support, sometimes councillors, you know, has implications. They're going to financially support it as well. I, I find endorse is probably.
Well, I thought endorse, I don't know.
So for the mover, what do you want? Do you want endorse or support?
I, I think Gav, uh, Officer Gav just, he, he, he was saying, he suggested maybe it was consent.
Yeah, offer consent, consent to the proposal.
Oh, yeah.
Consent.
That narrows it down to just saying, we do it.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
That's acceptable, the council. Just find sometimes with support that does have.
What's the word? Offer consent, yeah, that'll, we're not making any commitment then, are we?
No, no, that's, but we're saying that they can apply.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yes.
I do have a question though. Just on point three, simply supplying the, um, association with a copy of our certificate, is that strong enough language to say that our, um, currency for public liability covers this association and what they want to do on what is our land?
Yes, so, through you, Mr Mayor. Um, with the public liability insurance, I, I have actually, um, already received some wording from, um, our insurer, um, in regards to this. We're, we are anywhere in Australia, in fact, or anywhere in the world except for Canada and the US. We're, we're insured for, for our public liability, for our liability to events and, and professional indemnity as well. Um, wherever that may be. It doesn't need to be on council land. However, our insurance company, um, would not pass that insurance on. Um, the way I explained it to, to Jock on the day was if, if Roma Bush Gardens Association dug a hole and they left that hole unattended to, council had no idea about that hole. Then, then it could be that our insurance company would, would then go after their insurance company if someone was injured in that hole. Because we, we can't help be held liable for something that we had no knowledge of or, or ability to fix.
If they don't, through you, if they don't have their own public liability, who's liable?
Um.
The committee.
I, I would recommend that they should have, through you, Mr Mayor, I recommend they should have their own public liability insurance. If they can't afford it, um, potentially they could.
Apply to council.
Apply to council.
And we know there are other groups in, in the exact same position. Because the way, when I, Jock spoke to me about this, I, the way I looked at the bush gardens was not dissimilar to, um, the parklands. Right, if I go for a walk around the bush gardens and I trip over a, you know, a path, well, our public, the council's public liability would, would cover that. But at an event, being, you know, if they had a concert there on the amphitheatre, well, that's a bit, that's no longer just a parkland. So that's an event that's put on by a, a, a different group other than council.
Yeah.
And that's your point. They'll need their own public liability in time to, okay.
Run an event.
No, you're right. And also just obviously one of the conditions, I think it came out there too, the updating their agreement as well. So that's generally standard condition of our agreements with them as well.
We currently don't have one.
Saying, so that's going to be part of the agreement. We've always, that's a standard condition in our agreement with any of the, the lease, leasehold land that we, we're the trustee for. So we normally actually, that is a standard condition that you've got a public liability.
Does it have to be a lease?
Well, councillor Hancock's next, then O'Neill, then McMullin.
Um, I'm glad you brought that up about the lease because, um, I, I have someone spoken to me about that too and they're finding it very difficult, um, about the lease. Um, and what I'm concerned about is point three, it says to supply them a copy of the public liability. But in the letter, they're actually asking, they want to determine the tenure responsibilities and any potential liability. So they actually want to, they want more than just supplying a public liability. They actually want some understanding around the tenure responsibilities and the public liability of, um, the Bush Gardens Association. So I just, how far off is that lease coming? Is it?
Point four is going to deal with all those more tricky issues, I believe.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I note that, but this is what they're actually asking for as a matter of priority in their letter. Is to support the establishment of the recreational amphitheatre and to determine the responsibility. And from the conversation I've had with them is there's a fair bit of angst about this whole lease and understanding whose responsibility is.
It's going to be up to you, through you, Mr Mayor. It's going to be a trustee lease. It's not council land, it's a reserve. So it has to be a trustee lease, so, and we, we do that all the time, so with the department.
I, I, I believe, I haven't worked on the lease myself, but I believe the lease, or, or draft lease has been presented to the committee. Um, I, I know there were some questions over the insurance because someone approached me about that. Um, uh, hope, I'm hoping that, uh, our information from, uh, our, our insurance provider might clear up that information a- and put us in a better position to, um, execute that lease, uh, the trustee lease, sorry.
And maybe, maybe we need the, either the LDO or, or someone to work through them and, you know, help them with, um, encourage them to get a quote because there is relatively affordable public liability for very small. Or do they have, if they don't even want to go that way, maybe we can get back that they just want to be an advisory. Something to do with that, um, you know, that park area there. And if they don't want anything as formal as an incorporated body, or they're an incorporated body.
Oh, well, there you are. But they don't, there is some reservation around, um, uh, that group of volunteers taking on a, a lease. Yeah, yeah. So I think we need to work through that. But I just, there may have to be some work done on this in January, prior to the next council meeting for that application. Because I'm not convinced that the body that they're looking to seek the dollars from don't want some level of formality in who has, um, rights over that parts of land.
So should we put something in the council, um, work with the group to help them with their application or something to say like, you know, we do all this, but we actually say we'll work with them so they can find a way to be able to apply without getting the application and then finding it's wrong because it's not got the right, um, who's councillor McMullin?
Mr Mayor, the discussions I had with Jock, I don't know what, but whatever they were sent back prior to that, he said weren't applicable to what they were doing or, so I don't know what it was, what, I don't know who told them, you know, where he got that from, it wasn't applicable, or wasn't the correct paperwork for what they were. But I don't know, we know where they understand the force.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We're feeling restricted when it comes to reserve land on the type of the agreements we can offer to the groups. Um, we can go, um, we, we could potentially do a trustee license, which is a less formal agreement. However, there are restrictions as to how long they can be for. And sometimes, um, some of the big things that these community group want is they want to know that, that, you know, we're supported for a long period of time. So with leases, with trustee leases, sorry, we can go that, that longer period of time. Um, which is prob- which I would, it's safe to assume that's why they would present it with a trustee lease and not a trustee license in this instance.
So, uh, uh, Deput Director Rob, or Deputy CEO, who can work with the group to nut out all these bits and pieces and stuff?
Yes, we've been working with them now for a couple of years, did help with their master plan and that. Um, probably the lease is, it's, as Gav said, because it is, is state land. Um, it's a process there. We just, we can have a meeting there with probably the, um, MLDO as well. Um, probably good to have that com- point of contact there too for grant applications going forward. But, um, I think the purpose of what they've asked for for their funding application, I think you've got it pretty well covered there. Uh, maybe an extra item is that we council work with them to finalize the lease.
Or, or really what they want, because it, it, they might want to go that way, but they might work with council where we got the responsibility, but they know what they want. So, you know, just to keep them motivated so they want to work up there. Councillor Hancock?
Um, through you, Mr Mayor, would it, is it achievable if we added in, and obviously it's been moved, so it has to be through the mover, um, meet with the, with the group, um, to determine the tenure responsibilities and potential liability? Because that's what they actually want. They, they want, they, they, they want to be able to sit down and understand the document. Like the documents, obviously, you know, I'm sure it'd be over my head. You know, like they are hard documents to understand and, and whose, whose responsibilities want. So I'm just wondering whether we just, because if, I'm worried that if we send a resolution back like this without acknowledging what they've actually asked for, it, it looks like we haven't actually taken that into consideration.
So it could have been meet with the group to determine options for the long-term tenure responsibilities of, um, the Roma Bush Gardens.
Precinct, yeah.
And that, that, that allows the staff to have those conversations, which have to be in early January if the application's due in the end of January.
And, and what, uh, could you put in there, it's up to the mover of course, but put in there that suit, um, Roma Bush Gardens, that suit them, you know, so they get something that they want out of it, you know?
Well, I suppose it's that coming to an agreement, Mr Mayor, because yes, it must suit them, but we also have to stay within our laws and responsibilities. So I, I think it's, that would come out of that conversation, I would assume.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The, the big thing is, we've already been told once, it doesn't, they've been given something that doesn't suit them. Let's get, find out what they want. They go, oh, yeah, that'd, that'd work. Or, um, well, we don't like that, because I think it needs to be about getting a solution for them that they want. But what does the mover want?
Well, I'm happy with a, any additions, Mr Mayor. But I think the biggest, I know what's in the letter, but the biggest cons- well, the pressing issue was to get a letter of support in by the end of, because there's all those other things on the bottom as well there that, you know, it says consider the additional requests at a future meeting in dot point four. So I'm happy with anything, just as long as we can get them a letter of support before, well, it's.
Would you mind, uh, in that point four to add that suits the group? So we get back what they want and obviously.
Along respons- um, suitable to both parties, I suppose. Suitable to both parties. We've got, it's got to work for both parties, hasn't it?
Well, probably three parties, you've got the state there as well.
Well, three part, with all parties, suitable with, with all parties, Kel, please.
What I mean is, we would have to tell them the options, because we've only got certain options.
Yeah.
But then find out what they want out of it. What I mean is, we would have to tell them the options, because we've only got certain options, but then find out what they want out of it.
As 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 Gav pointed out, the the draft's been sent there, but that's probably the first we've heard there was changed, that word happened.
That's what Jock told me, he said something came through, he said.
Council, though, and that's normally how it works.
Probably meet with them and have a nut process.
Excuse me, Mister Mayor.
Councillor Hancock?
Just to tidy it up, could it be meet with the group to determine options suitable, that, yeah, suitable for all, that, options that would be suitable for all parties for the long term? Rather than just sticking that on the edge.
That would be, yeah, but.
I'm happy with that as a second up.
Righto, uh, does the mover wish to speak to them, you're happy with that?
Yeah, Mister, I'm happy with that, yeah, I think it's just, um, try and help these, this group as, quickly and as timely as we can, just, they can apply for this, um, funding for, in the, uh, by the end of January next year.
Uh, do we have someone that, against the motion or wish to speak for the motion? I'll speak for the motion, I believe the group does fantastic work up there, and anything we can do to, to help them and not hinder them, um, I think we need to know about it, and, um, it's certainly an asset, um, it's a very pretty place, and, um, how we can take it forward and get more use is, beneficial for the Maranoa community. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against? Does the mover wish to sum up?
No, thank you.
We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. Okay, I think. Okay, so we'll adjourn the meeting and everyone's ready. Item six point eight, fee waiver request for Ba- Bassett Park Show Society.
There's a conflict there, um, over conflict with, um, item number six point eight, um, description fee waiver for Bassett's Park, um, show society, um, declaring councillor is, uh, myself, councillor Ladbrook. The person of interest is my wife Alana, and myself, the particulars, of interest is my wife Alana, is president of the Roma Show Society, and myself, a committee member of the Roma Turf Club, and the type of conflict is a declarable conflict of interest, and the action I'll take is leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Any other conflicts?
Hey, excuse me, Mister Mayor, Kel, I haven't got the, um, agenda coming up anymore. The, um, screen, your screen. I've just got those good-looking people in the room.
Councillor Burke, you let us know when you're back on, please.
That, um, the conflict that councillor Ladbrokes has raised, it's, it's more of a, it's a prescribed conflict of interest, this one, not a.
Thank you.
Because the matter is the Roma Show Society asking us to do something.
Okay, well, do you wanna just see if he can come back in and?
He just needs to check it, like.
Yeah, we'll ask you the question. So the question was raised, um.
I raised it.
Yeah, go ahead councillor O'Neill.
Just ask, this is with the declaration, is it a declarable or a prescribed?
Um, declarable.
Well, and the question is, I think what was asked, is it not a prescribed because your wife is the president of the, so, you know, it's up to you whether you wanna just change it to.
Joy has been declared, you're a declarable in the past, haven't you?
Hmm.
And it's.
Depends on, it depends on the circumstance.
True.
But, you know, do you change it to?
But it's the same circumstances that it's been all the time. You know?
The difference is that this is a request, which is an application, for council to consider directly from the Roma Show Society.
So, so do you have any appetite to change it to prescribed? Like, what what you're gonna do is the same thing, but you're gonna leave, but, yeah.
No, I'll just leave it at the same.
You wanna leave it as declarable?
Yeah, what's the difference between declarable and, when I stay in, I've got a chance to stay in and the other one not to stay?
No, no, not really, it's just, um, prescribed might fit more your conflict, if you go prescribed. Just a wording change.
All the others.
Hmm, well, you can, you can change, well.
Shouldn't they be all prescribed?
Well, councillor O'Neill was saying, this is, we're actually dealing with something about an application from Roma Show Society.
Mm-hmm.
It's not just even mentioned in a report, you know? So, so, yeah.
Well, to tell the truth, I wouldn't, wouldn't know.
Uh.
Right, but the point is, it has been raised by another councillor, should you do it as prescribed, not telling you what to do, it's up to you.
No.
But it might be safer for you to do it as a prescribed conflict of interest.
So if I do this as prescribed, um, most of the others should be su.
Yeah, but then you can check it after this and find out. I think, yeah. You know, and might be better to be safe than sorry, sort of thing, you know?
So they say it prescribed.
So it's only just a change up to top.
After the, um, information I received re- originally, it doesn't matter what you call it, you get outside, you're still accountable for what happens inside the room. Even if you're outside.
So you're happy to put in as prescribed?
Yeah.
Righto. Okay.
Same, same result as.
Thank you, councillor Ladbrook. Okay, you can go now, thanks, no other conflicts. Have we got councillor Burke back in, is the communication issue so sorted?
Yeah, yeah, I'm all good.
You're all good, righto. Item six point eight, fee waiver request for Bassett Park Roma Show Society, I'd like to move that, council approve the request to waive the associated fees attached to Roma Show Society conducting the Maranoa New Year's Spectacular, at Bassett Park on thirty first of December twenty twenty one. Two, require the Roma Show Society to pay for the use of, uh, um, no, I'm actually gonna change that to, um, I probably don't even need two. So that, one will do. Okay, do we have a second for that motion, councillor McMullin? Oh, I I will actually add to that, um, to the motion, and I'll check with the second up, that the, um, costs, um, be charged to the in kind assistance minor, in kinder, or minor assistance, uh, minor assistance budget for in kind, well, for in kind assistance for minor budget. Um. In kind assistance for minor budget, so that's where the cost will be charged to. Okay, it's the second, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, Mister Mayor.
Okay, do we have any opposition?
I have a question.
Please go ahead.
Through you, Mister Mayor, to Officer Georgie, um, just with the, um, community grant application, do you know within the application, did they list in their budget the, the fee for hiring the, the facility?
I don't think so, I didn't see that, I'll have to double check, that's, three, two, I'll have to double check that they, did request the ten thousand dollars for, I think it just, from what I remember, just the overall event.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll speak for the motion, um, I believe that, um, the community actually would look to council, um, uh, about what events are on in the region, and I believe this is a situation where Roma Show Society has taken the initiative, to put on a new event, uh, for a new, New Year's event for the community. I believe that comes with extremely high risk, um, as we know, the incredible costs, um, in just putting anything on. Um, I believe that, um, it would be, the least we can do is for Roma Show Society, at the Roma Showgrounds, to be able to give a fee waiver. Uh, I believe if it goes from success to success and they don't need the fee waiver, they would not ask for it. Um, but I do believe it's very important to, uh, back, uh, non-for-profit community groups having a go for the bend of, benefit of the community. Uh, does anyone wish to speak against the motion? For the motion, councillor McMullin?
Mayor, I'd just like to add, um, I note in the report that the show society is charging an en- entry to the event at the cost of thirty dollars for adults, and twenty dollars for children. That entry fee is not just to get through the gate, that covers all, all the, I I won't call them sideshows, but all the activities there, uh, bar food and drink.
Okay, um, does anyone else wish to speak for or against the motion? Uh, I'll sum up, yeah, I I do believe we've seen many events that have come and gone in the Maranoa. Um, and there's, there's even been major financial losses out of trying to put things on for the community, so I believe, uh, when the show society afford thinking that we should get in there and support, uh, them having a fee waiver for the Roma Showgrounds or the showgrounds in Roma. Okay, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Six zero. Um. Yeah, I'll put a statement, a reason is I believe that this is to create economic, uh, development, uh, in the region of the Maranoa. Can I, councillors have anything else they want? Okay, yeah, if we can get councillor Ladbrook back in. Uh, item six point ten, requests for Roma Show Society Works.
Six point nine.
Page seventy, jumping the gun, thank you. Six point nine, applications through Regional Arts Development Fund, R A D F, Programme Round One, twenty twenty one, twenty two. I've got a question, I noted a couple of projects don't, um, meet the criteria, do we have the ability, to tweak the criteria, so they may meet in a future, uh, may work in a future round?
Miss, Mister Mayor, should I get, I should declare my conflict before we discuss it any further?
Righto, please go ahead.
Yeah, item six point nine, description, applications through Regional Arts Development Fund, R A D F, Programme Round One, two thousand twenty one, twenty two. I'm the declaring councillor, the person with interest is my father Gary Burkett. Particulars of interest, Gary's on the executive of the Bringer Heritage Museum Incorporated, who I mentioned in the report. Uh, type of conflict's a declarable conflict of interest, um, I will leave the re- meeting while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, well, uh, so you're le- left, that's good, righto. So I just got that question that I've asked.
So, Mayor, I'm hesitant to do this again, but that's a prescribed conflict of interest.
All right, okay. Okay, well, can someone ring councillor Burkett?
If, if, if the guide from the Queensland Government is correct, and the trigger is it's an application. I'm, I'm happy, I mean, councillor McMullin, you obviously disagree, I'm happy for you.
Well, I don't say I disagree, but it doesn't matter what you call it, when you're sitting out there, you're still responsible.
But you've still gotta get.
Oh, you got it, you wanna come back on? Righto, right.
Cameron, with mine, like, I'm sort of in, you know, leave it to our officer to put in.
No, 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 no.
No, I think you've gotta do it.
Is yours, not an officer.
Okay.
It sits with you, yeah.
But councillor Ladbrook, you can now, um, get advice on that to clear this up, um, you know, for the next meeting, you can ask for advice on that. Uh, councillor Burkett, have we got your back?
I just, um, just, I just.
Yeah.
Director Darren's, um, sorry, Mister Mayor, three, Director Darren's just looked up the website, just might clarify, that was all, so, prescribed interests are the following. Uh, any com- um, combination of gifts, loans, sponsored travel, uh, contract with council, supply of goods, or application or submission to council. Which is what this one is, um, and that's for you or your spouse or parent.
Righto, okay.
So that, that was for a prescribed interest, so.
Not just that, no, Rob, like it's partner organisation.
Correct, yeah, I just, there is, and I just highlighted the, the relevant section that we're talking about here today, though.
Okay, councillor Burkett?
Yeah, I'm all good.
So are you, would you, uh, are you on the, in the light of what, uh, was raised about it should be prescribed, are you happy to change it to prescribed?
Oh, yeah, I I had a quick look before, but I didn't go right into it, but, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Righto, and it's the same outcome as far as what happens, okay, so, thank you.
But in the pa- in the past, it's the same one I've done, it was declarable the last nearest times with the, that item. That, in regards to that thing, but anyway.
Well, maybe we can get advice on that, because we've got two councillors and obviously there'll be others that will have that, so we can clarify it, so we get it right, you know?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Yeah. Righto, so you'll leave now?
Oh, I haven't just done it yet, oh, okay, well.
No, no, we had to get you back for you to declare, to go prescribed, and now.
Oh, okay.
And now you can leave for us to deal with the odd.
Okay, right, yeah, signing off.
You're off now, thank you. Okay, so we had that question?
Sorry, um, with R A D F, R A D F is more for upskilling community groups. The two applications that were not approved don't have any way in their application that shows us that they're wanting to upskill. So the recommendation was to, uh, ask those community groups to apply for a much suited, more suited funding grant, so our community grants would support, their applications, but not through R A D F.
But I'm, but my question is, do, can we change the criteria, or is it, are they, are A D F from?
We get these guidelines, guidelines from, uh, Queensland.
And also, could we not go back to them and say, if you've got a way to upskill, then come back in the next round and talk to us?
We could, yes, we could go back to them and and s- and, uh, let them know why they weren't successful this time around, and they could, include an element in their application next time that would meet the guidelines.
Yeah, righto. Any other questions, councillor Hancock?
No, um, just to add to that, Mister Mayor, I believe that that is what the suggestion is into the report, is that, the officers, when they, they will go back to them and tell them why they're not, and make suggestions as to ways that they can be eligible for this, or, the really good thing about this is, it's not much difference towards the application to go to a community grant, so it's not an extra, a whole extra work, it can actually just slip. Yeah, obviously, they've just got to change wording, but the work's done for the grant, it just doesn't fit that application, doesn't fit that grant, uh, grant, grant funding application.
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, I understand that, but maybe our other round is getting a bit thinner next year, so I was just thinking if something, could fit the criteria, then, you know, might have an opportunity here, so, if we're gonna have those discussions, then that's good.
A- and I do know, Mister Mayor, that like, as part of the group, they def- they definitely wanna support the groups who take the time to put in the application, and so, they really do work hard at having a very good detailed look at the application and seeing how it could change, how it could fit. Um, as you can see in the report, even while the application, there still needs a bit of tweaking to do to make it fit, but it, but we're putting it forward to be accepted. So I do know that the, um, the group and the officers work really hard to try and get the applications to fit, um, where possible.
Yeah, any other questions? Do we have a mover? Councillor Hancock?
I move that council one, and, sorry, not one, I move that council endorse the R A D F Committee's grant assessment recommendations.
I move that council one, and, sorry, not one, I move that council endorse the R A D F Committee's Grant Assessment Recommendations for Applications Received Under. Round One, twenty twenty one, twenty two.
Uh do we have a second, uh councillor Ladbrook, any opposition, does anyone wish to speak to it? Please go ahead.
Yeah, um thank you, Miss Mayor, just want to congratulate um the groups that are, once again, applied for the R A D F funding um grant. I just think this is a fabulous way of promoting arts and culture in our region. Um and just want to um encourage more community groups to have a look at this funding opportunity, um because it is a very. It's a very good way of upskilling your volunteers that work within your group. Using the funding to be able to upskill your volunteers who work within the group.
Does anyone else wish to speak? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour? Six zero.
And councillor Swatton Neil's there too, obviously probably aware that Taneel's successful, obviously with our um arts culture officer there too, so um. First meeting with us, so.
Yeah, congratulations, record the working with you in that department.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get councillor Burkett back, please? Are you texting him?
Yeah, I'm back on.
No. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next one, six point ten, request for Roma Show Society Works Programme, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Bassett Park, councillor Ladbrook.
That's right. Let's see. Um I have a conflict with um six point one zero, description, um Roma Sh- um request Roma Show Society Works Programme. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, Bassett Park. And declaring councillors, myself, councillor Ladbrook, the person of um. We, with the interests related is my wife, Alana Ladbrook, and myself, um particulars of interest. My wife Alana is president of the Roma Show Society, and myself is committee member of the Roma Turf Club. And the type of conflict is prescribed, prescribed conflict of interest, and the action I'll take is leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
We have a, uh, okay, well, thank you, no other conflicts? You can move. Uh, okay, so we're dealing with item six point ten, request for Roma Show Society Works Programme, twenty twenty one, twenty two. Do we have any questions? I've got a question, I, I see the recommendation is to note the contents, will those items still be? Where we haven't done it, um anything, are we going to keep um discussions going with Roma Show Society with those items?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, we are.
Righto. Okay, so I'd like to move that council note the contents of the, of this report, do we have a second, uh? Councillor Hancock, any opposition, does anyone wish to speak to it, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Zero. Uh, item uh six point eleven, maintenance upgrade, working dog trial arena, Bassett Park. Councillor Ladbrook.
I think this would be prescribed as well.
Yeah.
So item number, the item number is six point one one. Um description, maintenance and upgrade working dog trial arena Bassett Park. Declarable councillor is myself, councillor Ladbrook, person of interest, related party is my wife Alana. Um Ladbrook and myself, particulars of interest, my wife Alana is president of the Roma Show Society. And myself as a committee member of the Roma Turf Club, and the type of conflict, prescribed conflict of interest, and the action I'll take. Is leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Okay, thank you, councillor Ladbrook. Item uh six point eleven, maintenance upgrade, working dog trial arena Bassett Park. Uh I've just got a question, um I, I believe that um they're either, they'd got some funding for this. And they wanted to just get approval to do the work, is that right, or have I, or were they going for a grant and then they just wanted to?
Thank you, Mayor, uh Mayor, my understanding to date, and we've only just taken this component over as the director, not putting that out there as an excuse.
No.
However, uh we were of the understanding that they were going looking for money for this project. Uh and the thing that we were unsure about is that what our commitment may be to that project. And probably wanted to just get a bit more of an understanding from the committee. On how, what they're actually intending to do, that we could bring that back for council to be considering before we went down a, down a track with it.
My memory of the discussion we had the other day was that they were, they want us to support them going and getting. External grants to do the works, yeah.
But I, I think we need to be, I'm happy to move it, but I think we need to be just giving them in principle support and. Letter of support and get all that happening so they can go and do it, because. Uh part of the conversation was, we don't want any money from council, we just want to go and upgrade those, and I thought they had some money or something. They had some bit of money to, and they just want to be able to do the work.
Yeah, I, no, I think that what, that, I can't remember if they've got money, they definitely just want to go and do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether they're getting money or got money, I thought they were applying for grants, but, but that in principle support you're talking about, that's exactly what we should.
Okay, well, I'll move that council provide in principle support. For Roma Show Society to uh carry out works to the um proposed maintenance. And upgrades to the working dogs' trial arena at Bassett Park in consultation with council offices. Um and then two, provide a letter of support as requested. In regards to seeking funding for um this project if needed. So we're, we're not committing any financial money, but we're saying, yes, if you can go and do it, great. And if you've got money, then work with the officers and, and go and do it. Uh which is what my gut feeling is, they have got some, I thought they got one of their grants to do this, so. Um but it might have been that they want to get a grant to do it, so I don't know, but. So, providing principles for, to carry out works for proposed maintenance and upgrades to the working dog trial. Arena at Bassett Park in consultation with council offices. Uh provide letter of support as requested in regards to seeking funding for um this if needed.
Mayor?
This project?
Yes.
Council officers should be acknowledged, the directing, uh, the director from Roma, I meant.
Yep, so we just put uh the Roma.
How you want to word it then?
Uh Roma Director. I was just keeping abroad in case there's other people.
And I think that's directing staff.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, they should keep it as officers, councillor and the CEO.
Had that discussion, haven't we, like, if you keep it the council offices?
It, it will be Darren councillors there, but I think you just need to keep it as council officers, they're just um, because it comes back by through the CEO.
I didn't think it would be, that's not the directing staff that's telling the show society to consult with the Roma Director, we're not telling the Roma Director to do anything.
Well, this is, the council was making this resolution. They're directing the Roma Director to be the contact when that's not.
I think you should get council officers there, I think, because anyway, if Darren's on leave anyway, it'll probably be me anyway, so just save locking in the person if they're on leave, you know, so.
So we'll go to council offices, but to the deputy mayor's point, we might get um clarification on how we can say it without directing in the future. Um, okay, do we have a second for that motion? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition, does anyone wish to speak to it, we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Six zero.
Uh, Mr Mayor, I probably need a statement of, through you, Mr Mayor, acting as deputy CEO, do we need a statement of reason for that? It's sort of, we're sort of combined.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't go against the resolution, I think he just broadened it, so it's probably no different to the um. The Bush Gardens one, so you've just added to it, you haven't gone against the resolution, so.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, item seven point one, proposed Mariner Hero Award. I'd like to move that this lay on the table till, and I'm going to have two parts to this, and then I'm going to move to a, um add it to the. The closed agenda, but I move that this lay on the table till we're dealt with the closed items, and then we deal with it. Okay, all those in favour?
Did you, sorry, yeah, so I, you said there's going to be two parts, are you moving this into the close?
I will be for a matter that we need to talk about in.
So can you just move this directly into the close then, it's not a matter of laying it on?
Righto, okay, yeah, I'm happy to change that, um so I'll move that um this item seven point one. Um proposed Mariner Hero Award be dealt with as part of the clo- uh the clo- closed agenda? And the reasons, can you pull the reasons up, please, and I'll pick one of them? Um have you got the, the reasons that were allowed to, you know, that box, that?
There's your reasons on the screen, Mr Mayor.
Can you blow them up, please?
Uh, probably can't blow that one up.
I might have come at it.
It's a, it's a set box.
Is it?
Yeah. So, yeah, which one are you after there?
I'll tell you what, Jeffrey, a red tie would have fitted in there, would be a better colour there, don't you think, Julie?
Mine is common.
A red tie, Christmas would have fitted in with that. And the red, but red.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Yeah. Just in case you were considering that. It'd been Christmasy, would have been Christmasy.
Uh I might use F, health and safety of individuals. There's a bit more than just.
Or a group, or a group of individuals.
For individuals, it would be. Okay, um do we have a second for that, councillor McMullin? Uh any opposition, we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
That's six, uh seven zero, okay, so that one's gone, um.
Back page, Mr Mayor, that one's not finished.
No, I mean, it's gone into closed, yeah, we're going to deal with it in closed, so we don't, we'll deal with it later, but, okay, so has everyone read um?
No, we haven't finished the open, huh?
Oh, but I'm just asking, has everyone read these two opens? So zero, I'm going to go.
One agenda item on the back page.
Ah, right, okay.
I got a conflict.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Um I'm going to move that this matter lays on the table till the um ordinary meeting of the twenty third of February.
Okay, um well then we'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Uh that's uh seven zero. Okay, now, um, okay, moving on to zero, uh progress update, twenty twenty one, twenty two, operational plan and budget. Do we have a mover?
So, Mr Mayor, which one do you have?
L one.
Well, I've got zero on mine, but, but it might be L one.
That's, which one you took, that's for the last meet, Mr Mayor, Mr, Mr Mayor.
Yep.
That one with zeros, CEO's asked us to leave it to the last agenda item of the day, because you may add to it between now and that length.
So we're on our one.
I haven't got it, that's why.
Local residents of low volume, rural roads under take home making.
Where is that?
Here, I've got mine on.
This one, here.
Okay, well, just adjourn till.
Yeah, yes, Mr Mayor, thanks for that, Rob, uh deputy CEO, sorry.
Okay, item L one, local resident of, uh residents of low volume rural roads to undertake own maintenance. Councillor McMullin.
Mayor, I'll move that council receive and note the report by way of update to the policy development associated with resolution. S M dash one two dot two O two one dash O five, noting a subsequent report, a subsequent report will be tabled to council. On the matter, once the, once further advice and research into the topic has been completed.
We have a second, councillor Ladbrook, any opposition, does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Seven zero. L two, tender, two two, O O two, upgrade of jockey rooms at Bassett Park.
Move that one into the closed, obviously since, we put it in as a space saver, the report's been developed there, but there's obviously a fair bit of co-contribution from. Um sporting clubs there, so just from a budgetary point of view, there's, there's figures there from other groups and other associations that um that they're putting in, so.
Councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move this go into closed for the purpose of confidentiality regarding.
About council's budget, is that, which, which item, which um?
L two.
That's C, that's C.
C, is it, C, so reason C, is that what you're going for?
Oh, I, I, that's not to do with, well.
If we could pull C up when.
Huh? Okay.
But it's not about our budget.
No, that's what I thought, I was going to go.
But aren't we, aren't we looking at doing something with our budget?
But it's more to do with um.
Probably, I, I think he probably got there, that there's, I was just thinking with the, it is our budget too, there's probably some changes to ours involved there, which is going to. Be impacted by contribution from another party, so they're contributing for our budget, for our project.
Also, if you look at page five, there is options there, should we wish to um look at financial, different financial aspects.
I'll see you work then.
See you.
Okay, do we have a second, uh councillor O'Neill, any opposition, we'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
So it's gone into closed, okay, now, I think that's all, is um, do we have anyone to go into closed?
Councillor Ladbrook, you have to declare out.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, yeah, did you want to declare councillor Ladbrook on?
Yep, um L two, declarable, um item is L two, um description is tender. Twenty two double zero two, upgrade of jockey room Bassett Park, declaring councillor is myself, councillor Ladbrook, person of interest. And related is my wife Alana and myself, um particulars of interest is my wife Alana. Is president, president of the Roma Show Society, and myself a committee member of the Roma Turf Club, type of um conflict, um it would be declarable.
You're going to go, which one's this one for?
I think this is declarable, declarable conflict of interest, hey? And um I will be, the action I'll take is leave the room while the matter is being voted on, discussed.
So is any application from the turf club to do this? Is that an application?
No, it's not an application, they are contributing though. No, it's not an application. They are contributing though.
And there's, I've got the LC one as well.
And then this one, these ones here.
Oh, yeah, so they're contributing, the turf clubs contributing, and so.
So is it just safer to go prescribed?
I think we just go in conflict of interest, and they can forget about the declared or the... Declarable or the prescribed, because it's becoming.
It same, has the same result, and we're still gonna waste a lot of time debating the issue.
Informing councillor, there are councils that are under investigation for doing the wrongs.
Once, as long as you go out of the room. Anyway.
Councillor Ladbrook, do you, are you happy to just make it prescribed?
Yes.
Okay, any other conflicts?
Yes.
C two, um... The item number is C two, description, permission to use, um, shed at Bassett's Park. Declaring councillor is myself, Councillor Ladbrook, the person of interest is my wife Alana and myself. Particulars of interest, my wife Alana is president of the Roma Show Society and myself committee member of the Roma Turf Club, and the type of conflict.
Well, whether this one is right, because there's no money or anything.
Yep, declarable conflict of interest, and the action I'll take is leave the room while the matter is being, um, discussed and voted on.
Righto, any others, conflicts? Okay, do we have someone to move into closed? Oh, we got another one? Uh...
Yep, LC one, the item number is LC one, describe building better regions programme round six. Declarable councillor is myself, Councillor Ladbrook, and the, um, person with the interests related party is my, my wife Alana Ladbrook and myself. Um, particulars of interest, my wife is president of the Roma Show Society and as a committee of the Roma Turf Club, Bassett's Park and Bassett's Park Users Group are mentioned in the report. Type of con- conflict is declarable conflict of interest. And the action I'll take is leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Okay, any other conflicts? Okay, do we have someone to move into closed?
Just gonna add.
Yep, good idea.
Mr Mayor. And I just would like to check, see one's confidentiality is on? Yep, it's okay.
Did you push that off there, Councillor?
Okay, do we have a mover to go into closed? Councillor Hancock.
In accordance with provisions of section two-five-four J three of the local government regulation twenty twelve, that council resolved to close the meeting to the public at twelve oh three P M to discuss confidential items that its councillors consider is necessary to close the meeting. In accordance with section two-five-four J five of the local government regulation twenty twelve, the following table provides matters to be discussed and I know of what is, what is to be discussed while the meeting is closed. Agenda item C one, communities combating pests and weeds during drought amendment to project. C two, permission for use of shed at Bassett Park. C three, nomination of projects for funding under the Australian, Australian government's preparing Australian communities local stream. C four, review of supplementary rate notice assessment one-five-oh-one-nine-six-eight-oh. C five, request for pension concession assessment one-two-oh-oh-one-oh-one-two. LC one, building better regions programme round six. LC two, proposed Mariner Hero Award. LC three, tender two-two-oh-oh-two, upgrades jockey rooms at Bassett Park.
Okay, do we have a second now? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour?
But, Councillor Burghardt.
He dropped off.
Sounded like he dropped off there before.
Okay, well then that means six zero. Starting with, um...
C one.
C one. C one, communities combating pests and weeds during drought amendment to project. Councillor O'Neill.
Where the council receive and note the office's report is presented.
Do we have a second now? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to the vote. All those in favour? Six zero. Moving on to C two. Uh, we might actually...
Can we just keep going? Just be quick.
Righto, okay, won't be long. Okay, C two. What page have we got?
Six things.
Okay, C two, permission for use of shed at Bassett Park. I would like to move.
On the, on the screen.
That one enter into an agreement with Ro- Roma, uh, with Angus Mitchell for the use of the, um, for the use of the other end of the Fashion Parade building at Bassett.
Northern end of the Fashion Parade building?
Yeah, northern end of the Fashion Parade building for a period of twelve months. Include in the agreement the requirement for the group, uh, personnel and equipment to vacate the building for four weeks prior to Roma show and the week of the event and one week following the event, a total of six weeks. And for Roma, and for the Roma Cup, the weekend of the event, if required, as negotiated by staff. Three, offer, uh, Angus Mitchell, um... Oh, well, yeah, um, offer Angus Mitchell to enter into an agreement with the agreed rental price of a hundred dollars per week, including GST. Four, waive the agreed rental price and allocate the charges to the in-kind assistance minor budget. And five, require the group, um, that Angus Mitchell provides a copy of public liability of the value of twenty million dollars. Six, rec- um... Um, and I don't think you really need six, I think what he's doing there won't need it. Okay, do we have a second to that?
Have a second, Mr Mayor, but just a couple of tidying up, Cal. Five, require that the, um... Okay, number one, on the end of northern, the N's dropped off. Number one, this is northern. And then number three, change that to Angus Mitchell. And number five, require Angus Mitchell to provide.
Hang on, no, this thing.
Angus Mitchell.
Provide a copy. To provide.
That council require Angus Mitchell to provide a copy of the public liability.
Yep, righto, do we have a second for that motion?
I did.
Oh, you did? Right, okay. Um, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it?
Mr Mayor, just sorry, I know that last one, we don't need a copy of that, um... Do you, do you wanna say that, that, that they require that he hold all the required licenses and training requirements? We don't need it, we don't need to be provided with a copy, but.
Mr Mayor, you'll need blue card and all that stuff.
He's got all that. Yeah, I'm, okay, I'm happy to put in requires.
At that point, we, we don't need a copy of it, but just, yeah, just maybe it's just that, um, he required that he holds all the required licenses and training requirements.
And that was circular to councillors, so you all got that. So, um, require that Angus Mitchell provides a copy, oh, no, just, what do we have? Require that, um...
Hold all required licenses.
Yeah, require that Angus Mitchell hold, hold all required licenses. Is the second, are you happy with that?
I just wonder though, um, it's all well and good to say that, but the staff are still gonna have to cite them to know that he's holding all the required licenses.
Well, I've got a copy and I've emailed, looks like I can email them to the staff too.
Okay.
Okay, does the second are happy with that?
So once again, that council require Angus Mitchell to hold all the required licenses. Thank you.
Righto, so, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Five zero.
Your watch can come back?
Yes, please. Um, I'll move that, uh, we deal with the Mariner Hero Award next. Uh... What number's hit now?
Who's it on?
In the Y there. What number is it?
It's, um, seven point one.
Which is now LC two.
What have we changed it to, Cal? LC two?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favour? Six zero.
Who was it? Who moved it? The mayor and Councillor O'Neill second?
Just to deal with it now.
Oh, okay.
Item seven point one, proposed Mariner Hero Award. I'd like to move that, when you're ready. That, one, council create a Mariner Hero Award category as an opportunity to recognise outstanding heroism at the discretion of council. Two, the Mariner Hero Award be awarded as discussed at the meeting. We have a second, and Councillor O'Neill, any?
I just, would you consider to, yeah, removing category, just Mariner Hero Award?
Yeah, council create a Mariner Hero, Hero Award? No category. Uh, you happy to second that, Councillor?
Yeah.
Um, any, um, wish, person wishing to speak for or against? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Six zero. Okay.
C three.
C three. Uh, nominations of projects for funding under the Australian government's preparing Australian communities local stream. Councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move that council, one, submit an application under the Australian government's preparing Australian communities local stream for the following projects. A, sup- supply and installation of advanced electronic warning signage Ashburn Road, Ashburn Road diversion channel, Mesquimble Street, East and Bungle Street. B, rewiring and connection of automatic transfer generator to Surat Administration Se- Centre. And two, authorize the chief, chief executive officer to sign the submission form and any further agreements with the Australian government as required.
We have a second now? Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Six zero. Uh, uh, item C four, I move that this get dealt with, uh, last item of the meeting. All those in favour?
Second last.
Later in the meeting?
Later in the meeting. All those in favour? Six zero. Okay, what's next?
Going?
C five, request for pensioner concession assessment. I'd like to move the council communicate with the pensioner to gain background knowledge into circumstances of the concession application and explore other possible solutions.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, um, I had a question for the officer who wasn't in attendance at the time, that you said I could ask when she gets back, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That I move to lay this on the table.
Righto, till later in the meeting. All those in favour? Is that, okay? Righto, six zero. Okay, moving on. We can do...
Think of the tender, LC one.
Yep. LC one, building better regions programme round six. Do we have a mover? Councillor O'Neill. Hang on, hang on.
Love to build, love to butcher that.
So you're doing LC one now?
Hmm. So where's the connection there with that one?
It's on page three.
Righto. Oh, yeah, okay. Um, please go ahead, Councillor O'Neill.
Councillor, one, submit application for funding for the Wollongong Calico Cottage and Tourism Precinct under the Australian government's Building Better Regions Fund, round six, infrastructure proj- project stream. Two, allocate the co-contribution as required in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget to enable any successful projects to commence within twelve weeks of executing a grant agreement. Three, authorize the chief executive officer or delegate to sign the funding application. Four, authorize the chief executive officer or delegate to sign the funding agreements as required if the project is successful. Five, consider advoca- um, five? Uh, advocate, uh, at the ministerial level for the submitted project.
Okay, do we have a second now? Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're gonna go to the vote. All those in favour? Get Councillor Ladbrook back.
What are we at?
Yeah, Cal.
We can go back to six point four.
LC, LC two.
Or the tender.
Oh, the ten, sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, so, yeah.
What's this for? The jockey's room?
Oh, is that, yeah, good point.
No.
No, he's already done that.
Come back in the item to be called.
Yeah.
Oh, does he? He's already declared.
What one?
It's all that one.
I know, but where is it in the list?
It wasn't that.
L two, LC, well, L two now is LC two, probably.
Uh, I did ask too about that, Councillor McMullin, and it is, because I couldn't find it. It's been delayed, and it's...
It's now LC two.
There was a late open.
Yeah, and we moved it.
It is now.
Now it's late, late closed.
LC three, LC three, tender two-two-zero-zero-two, upgrade to jockey rooms at Bassett Park. Body declared, so, thank you. Councillor Ladbrook's leaving the room. Uh, do we have a mover? Councillor Hancock.
I move that council enter into... Enter into post-tender negotiations with Brett Cherry Builders P T Y L T D for tender two-two-oh-oh-two upgrade jockey rooms at Bassett Park to identify opportunities for savings and reduce the overall cost of the tender project. Two, note that discussions are ongoing with Racing Queensland to potentially increase the current value of funding being provided by Racing Queensland towards the project. Three, allocate, allocate additional funding to Bassett Park Jockey Room Upgrade, work order two-two-three-eight-zero, up to the amount outlined in the body of this report. Four, authorize the chief executive officer or delegate to form a contract with Brett Cherry Builders P T Y L T D to carry out the works associated with the upgrade jockey rooms at Bassett Park, provided A, the final terms are acceptable, and B, the total project's cost, that is, the contract sum falls within the total approved budget for the project.
Uh, to the Deputy CEO, um... Should we not actually say in one that awarded subject to final, you know, where both sides have got to go final? Because we're, we're not, we're sort of saying it further down, but we're not really, and it is a tender, so.
It is, but I think, Mr Mayor, just that the fact that it's still gonna be subject to try and get back down within the budget, you probably need to deal with it, like, point one and point four collectively. Because if you put it up there, why don't you say?
You think you can sort of award that on that basis if it works?
By point four, if we can actually, um, go and enter in negotiations, get it in within the budget there, then we can award it. You give me a power, but if we go ahead and award it upfront, then, then you're locked into it regardless of what project you come up to, so. You give me power, but if we go ahead and award it upfront, then, then you're locked into it regardless of what project come up to, so.
If this is approved. Well. It doesn't say. Reduce the overall cost, okay, yeah.
So I think the key word council is going to be, Cal, can you scroll down there? Um, so that the total project cost falls within the total approved budget. Now, that may be through the savings, that may be through the additional funding from Queensland Racing.
Well, that's, I was trying to work out how you could probably let it out there, that there might be another source of extra income.
Yeah, so Mister Mayor, it may not just be realising savings, but you've got, by that, that final point there, it falls within the total approved budget, we may realise that. There's a number of ways we're going to realise that, so.
Righto. Okay, do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Five zero. Yeah. So have we got any that we can deal with?
When do you guys go, councillor O'Neill?
Two o'clock.
Oh, two o'clock, okay.
Councillor.
Um, so six four.
Yes.
Six point four. Page twenty eight.
Page twenty eight. Okay, um, I don't know what the item is, um. Oh, yeah, item six point four. Roma Sayards Interpretive Centre, new COVID nineteen public health and social measures from seventeenth to December twenty twenty one. Uh, do we have a mover? Or did we have one?
No.
Okay, councillor Mcmullin.
Mister Mayor, I'll move. I'll take it off the board and I won't get it wrong. That from the seventeenth of December twen- two thousand and twenty one. Council reduce the opening hours of Roma Say Yard's Interpretive Centre as follows. One, open at eight AM, last entry at one thirty PM, Monday to Friday. Two, closed weekends and public holidays. Three, review the interpretive centre hours as the public health and social measures, measures change.
We have a second, councillor Guthrie, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Five zero.
Councillor Sharon Dean, I'll let, um, most of you request to fill in that right one.
Should tell, I'll tell them.
What about that other question you had for the officers? Have we got someone coming over?
The answer's in the, the answer's in this document, this link.
Oh, no, it's another question.
Yeah. You know, I, that, we just dealt with that.
Uh, but there was one that you said no to do with the, uh.
Yeah, C five, so I'll move we're going to close.
Mister Mayor, just, oh.
I'm going to have to go.
Yep, righto, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas. We'll talk to you. You taking your briefcase?
No, no, I'll be back. Are you still here?
No, we'll, we'll be gone. We've, we've got two items, so.
I don't want, I'll come back and get the stuff.
I know, I, I move we're going to close.
Do we have a second up? Councillor Guthrie, all those in favour? Five zero. C four, review of supplementary rates notice assessment number one five zero one nine six eight zero. Councillor Mcmullin.
Mister Mayor, I'll move that council. One, grant the applicant a concession under section. One, one twenty. One C of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. To defer the due date of the supplementary notice. For assessment one five zero one nine six eight zero to twenty eighth of February two thousand and twenty two. And two, further consider the applicant's request for a concession in relation to a part rebate at a future meeting.
Do we have a second, councillor Guthrie? Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? All those in favour? Six zero. Okay, uh, any others?
C five.
C five. C five, request for a pension or concession assessment. I'd like to move that council communicate with the pensioner to gain the background knowledge into the circumstances. Of the concession application, explore possible solutions. Do we have a second up? Councillor Ladbrokes, any?
There's an extra word we put in there before. Explore.
I explore, um. Possible. Other solutions.
Other po.
Okay, do we, we have a second? Are you happy with that? Councillor Ladbrokes, you happy with that? Okay, uh, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Six zero. Okay.
Is there any more other than the CEO's one? We got everything?
No, just the CEO's one.
Okay. Just adjourned for a minute, so we're dealing with, uh, progress update on the. Twenty twenty one twenty two operational plan and budget. Uh, CEO, would you like to say anything on this one?
Um, I need to say councillors, um, that there's still a bit of work to do over the next week or so. Sorry, councillors, um. So, um, that's single sided, so when, when it's printed. I haven't worried about doing a hard copy, um, for you. Uh, that will be done once, once it's finished and we'll do it double sided, so it looks a little bit smaller. Um, but it, it's trying to achieve a few things, um. It'll be the progress report up until the quarter, end of quarter one, so there'll be a, um, a clean line in the sand. Uh, it's the tool that we've now used for the organisational restructure. Um, so it establishes the accountability and performance framework. Uh, so we've needed to go through, um, items line by line to identify. Um, which, which priorities or tasks, um, belong to who? So which director and which, where does regional begin and end? And where does local areas begin and end? Uh, so, um, I'm, I'm going through line by line. And then the, the directors that are here so far, um, they're going through and. Um, making sure that they feel comfortable, um, and then we're talking about anything that, that needs tweaking. But so far, so good, there seems to be a consensus on how the, the, um. Tasks are being allocated. Um. Using it as a, um. As a, effectively a business continuity plan as well, um, for the transition in the organisational leadership. Um, so we're cross referencing to make sure if there's any supporting documents that relate to those tasks, that that's recorded. And a person can quickly and easily pick up on that. Um, and go and have a look internally for more information, um, if need be. Uh, so any legal documents, et cetera, are being cross linked. Uh, so it will give, um, the organisation clarity, um, over the next few months. As to who is doing what and why, um, that task has been allocated, um, to them. Uh, so we're, yeah, ho- hopefully over the next, um, little bit, we'll be able to publish. We've put a hard, a PDF copy, um, into your team site. I've listed on the team site which ones are right to go and have a look at. Uh, the other ones, um, please just, um, don't worry about those yet, there's lots of notes and everything as we're, we're going through those. But the list of the ones that, that are in the note, um, is, are the ones that are ready to be looked at as what I'm terming part one. Uh, and then the balance of that will be, um, with you over the next week for review. Um, please, if there's any minor amendments or questions that you have, um, please send them through as you see it. Um, what I'm envisaging is a, just a one-page summary that a person doesn't need to look at the whole lot if they don't need to. They can just click on the, the icon and, um, if, for instance, if they're interested in, um. The water stats, they can click on the water and see how we're trending for that without having to read the whole document. So it'll just be a one pager, um, with all of the information sitting behind it. Um, so that's where that is at, Mister Mayor.
Righto, thank you. Any questions, councillors? Do we have a mover?
Uh, that, that, uh, sorry, Mister Mayor, I just realised, um, that page there essentially shows you how it will all fit together. And it doesn't matter which section, so there's thirty eight functions, it doesn't matter which function you're in. It follows exactly the same, um. Format in terms of the highlights and challenges, um, what we aim to do this year. Where we're at, the services and, um, how they're, they're tr- um, tracking, uh, our data. Including the historical data so that people can see trends, um, of what we've combined, um, collected over the years. Uh, our finances, a snapshot by the thirty eight functions and also where the projects are at. And, um, when we plan to start and when we plan to finish. So, um, just have, as you're reviewing, have that page, um, handy. Yeah, sorry, Mister.
Thank you. Do we have a mover? Councillor O'Neill.
I'll move that. Part one of the document, one, part one of the document we have received a notice of. Two, the balance of the document be circulated, councillors, over the next week for review. And three, the reports by function be published by Close of Business on the twenty third of December twenty twenty one. Subject twenty minor amendments advised by councillors and the chief executive officer.
Do we have a second up? Councillor Hancock, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Six zero. There was another item?
L one.
L one? L one, local residents of local volume railroads to undertake own maintenance. Do we have a mover?
That's been resolved.
Oh, it has been done.
It's been resolved.
I think you laid the table.
Was there any others? Was it a different number that someone?
There was some L two, wasn't it? The jockey's room, did we do that?
We did that.
The other one you had councillors, you went back and did it, was the Say Yards, um, COVID plain one, so you can come back and done that, so.
I thought there was something that we said.
The memo.
Yeah.
We're going to make it to the second last.
Seven point two on the table to twenty third of February, you said?
Yes.
Um, you laid six point four on the table to later and you've come back and you've dealt with that one?
Yep.
You moved two from the opening to close and you've dealt with those. Which was, um, L two and.
And we did L C one, didn't we? It's been done.
Yep.
And then you, um, the rates one, you, you had laid on the table, we've come back and done those, so.
I actually, I think it was L one, you did move to lay it and we've just dealt with it. That's moved on.
Oh, I see, yeah, righto, yeah. Righto, is there any further business, councillors? Just on behalf of, um, uh, council, I'd like to wish everyone in the community very merry Christmas and happy new year. And also wish all councillors and staff a very merry Christmas and happy new year and may you have a safe and enjoyable time. Okay, and I'll close the meeting at two fifty three PM and thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.